I'm Peter Sobel, I'm the President of the Menonah Grove School Board. The first item on the agenda is, well, actually before I do that, I want to introduce my fellow colleagues on the board. From left to right, Dean Bowles, Susan Fox, Jennifer Smith, Susan Manning, the Board Treasurer, Jeff Simpson, who was here a moment ago, who's the clerk, and Kerry Robbins, who's the Vice President. And over here on the right, we have Superintendent Dan Olson, who will be giving us report tonight. Mike Jalka, who's the District Attorney, and he's here as a parliamentarian tonight. And Jared Rosing, who will give his report, he's the Director of Business Services, he'll give his report a little later. Has there been, Item B, Declaration of Public Notice, there's been a Declaration of Public Notice. The first item on the agenda is election of the Chairperson for the meeting. Do I have nominations for Chairperson for the meeting? Kerry?
Hi, Kerry Robbins, 2743 Spencer Road in Catatrow. I would like to nominate Peter Sobel as our Chairperson for the 2015 Annual Meeting and Budget Hearing.
I second the motion.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Michael Bezer, 6305 Southern Circle, Menonah.
Okay, the motion that's been moved and seconded, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, I will chair the meeting. First item of business is the announcement of the availability of minutes from the 2014 Annual Meeting, which are in the packet that is over by the door. I'll mention the packet on page three, I'm sorry, on page four, you will find an agenda for tonight, and on page five, you will find the various suggested motions that go along with each of the agenda items. And that brings us to Item E, the Superintendent's Report, and Dan Olson.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Tonight, I'd like to give just a brief report on some of the key agenda items that we have, you know, focus on our school district for the 15-16 school year. And anytime that we talk about, you know, plans and goals and so on, we always start by referencing our school mission and vision, and so we make sure that we keep our focus on all of the, you know, planning that we do is on our students, and so this is also, you'll see it all over the place, in the packet that you receive tonight coming in, the mission and vision, so I won't read through it, but it's something that's really important to understand, that where this vision statement comes from, where the mission statement comes from, and a lot of times, it's not so much the statement, but the process that we go through in order to write the statements, that's usually part of the strategic planning process. Back in 2011 was the last time that it was revised, where we had a large group, I believe, of over 40 people that came together and really looked at the direction of the district, and what were the things that were important, where the direction we're going, and came up with a lot, a lot of work that came into writing these statements and looking at the vision. So that's very much involved, as we move forth, our planning, and tonight, we get into things like budget, about how that supports the goals and direction of the district. And so when we look at the agenda for 15-16, we really have five key items besides the day-to-day operations. Certainly, our teachers, our support staff, our principals are focused on student achievement first and foremost, and their buildings, the curriculum, those things go on, you know, annually, and, but as, we always have areas of focus that we want to look at as, when we look in the vision of moving forward. And so this year, we will be going through the strategic planning process again, I'll talk to, speak to that here in a moment. Employee compensation plans is something that we've been working on for a couple of years, and I'll give you an update on where we're at with that planning process. Long-range facilities plan, I'll briefly give a synopsis of where we've been in the last year on that, and where we are going, moving forward. Budget process, I'll touch on briefly, but you'll get a much more detailed presentation here a little bit later. And then as well, communication is something that's always an important thing with a school district, but when we talk about key initiatives, or particularly change, or things that are coming in the future, how we communicate is so important. That's been an area of focus for the last several years, to really make sure we look at increased ways, making sure we communicate with our constituents, and, as we move forward with these initiatives. So I'd like to start by talking a little bit about the strategic plan. And with that, our last strategic plan that was developed in 2011 was really focused on our academic achievement, and where are the areas that we think that we can do better. And a big part of that is some of the demographic information, if you look at our enrollment history over the last 10 years, and this particular slide talks about our demographics with ethnic and racial background, and you see that there was, you know, quite a shift, you know, over those 10 years. The last three, four years, it stabilized a little bit, but we have approximately, 84% of our students are white students, and our non-white, just over 16. And that is an area that we have achievement gaps between students of color and our white students, has been very much a focus for many years, and particularly these last couple of years, in our planning. Likewise, we look at economic status, and if you look at the history of the last 10 years, you see that about, you know, over a period of time, it increased fairly rapidly from just around 10% to now just over 20%, but again, it stabilized a little bit the last couple of years. And we talk about economically disadvantaged, we, the percentage or the numbers that we use there means students that qualify for free and reduced lunch, and we use that as our standard for that identification. We know statistically, historically, that students that are identified as economically disadvantaged generally do not have the same achievement of the non-disadvantaged students, and there's a number of factors that go into that, and not to say that we don't have some very high achieving students that fall in those categories, but it's an area of focus, and as we track students to make sure that we're meeting those needs, those are things that we need to be aware of as we move forward. So those are just two slides, we could go into probably hundreds of slides of different statistical things that we look at, and backgrounds, and achievement, but those are some things that I think should be aware of, as far as what are the demographics, you know, of our district. And a lot of times, when I talk to people, and our board members talk to people, they seem somewhat surprised that we really have, you know, over 20% of our students that are considered, you know, in the economically disadvantaged category. So with the strategic planning process, as I mentioned, the last time that the district went through the process was in 2011, it was meant to be a three-year plan, to expire in 2014, and we've really extended those goals the last two years, because they're very much focused on the academic achievement, they're very, and so it's not like you have to have a strategic plan in order for the school to operate, but it's, we do renew it, so we understand what that vision is. And so we, I have started that process now this fall, and that's something we'll be working on throughout the year, to come up with a new plan to be implemented. And the big difference between the one that we are looking at moving forward is, the last plan was a great plan focused on the student achievement that I mentioned, we're looking this time now to build upon that, and make it a little bit broader, and talk about, how do all the support services, you know, support that student achievement? What about budget? What about buildings? And, you know, what about human resources? All the things that go into those classrooms, how does that fit in in the big planning? And when we talk about some of the things coming up next, that has to be part of the long-range plan, and not just something that we do on a year-by-year basis. And so I mentioned resources, employee compensation is a real big piece of that. Of course, that's where it starts and ends, is having highly qualified teachers in the classroom, as well as support staff, anyone that's working with our students, and compensation is a big part of that. We need to be a district where we can attract and retain quality educators, and so we've been doing a lot of analysis about where does the compensation fit in with that? You know, are we a place that is attractive to work? There's a lot of things you can control outside of compensation that make, that are really important to be attractive to employees, but what is that level, and examining the market, and it's been a lot of shifts in the state, you know, over the last five years with regard to the compensation plans, and so we have been working on something the last two years, and we are in the process now of implementing a new plan, where the implementation stage, the transition's starting this year, and the full implementation will actually begin next year in the 16-17 school year. So this is a slide that just shows a summary, again, this could be an hour presentation just on the compensation plan, but I'll spend just a few minutes tonight to kind of give the overall view of where we're going, and the rationale of why we looked at a different model. Traditionally, all schools, not only in Wisconsin, but even nationally, traditionally, teachers have been compensated based upon longevity and experience, and their education levels, and additional graduate credits. And many have felt that there perhaps might be a better way to more fairly compensate teachers, and so longevity and experience is certainly important, education is certainly important, but sometimes they'll get a little bit out of whack as far as the weight of each. And so when we looked at the new model, we said, well, what is something else that we really value in our teachers, that we want to encourage teachers to strive for? Can we expect every teacher to be a highly qualified teacher? We don't want to have a plan that's a performance-based, saying, well, these teachers are better than these teachers, we expect all teachers to be great, and, and so that bar is the same. But there's additional things outside of the classroom, or even in the classroom, that have an impact beyond that classroom. We identified leadership as that real key piece. And we talk about leadership, there's a number of ways you can identify leadership, both formal and informal. Formal, of course, are people that serve on committees and chair committees and that sort of thing, but the informal leadership, people that also have an impact on their colleagues, people that provide training for their colleagues, we have a lot, we do a lot of in-house training that way, where the, we have our in-house experts. Just a leadership about how they teach in the classroom, that sharing, collaborating with their colleagues, the people, that's the type of thing that we want to encourage, is something that's been in place, we want to now recognize it in our compensation model to continue to encourage it. So we have pages and pages of rubrics about how we identify that leadership. So the first three levels, if you work your way from the bottom on up, the first level, mentorship, that is for our new teachers, right out of teacher training, right out of college, where they're assigned a mentor, generally their first two years in the district, and they start off at the mentorship level. The post-mentorship is generally the next three years. And in Wisconsin, all teachers receive a summative evaluation every three years, and then they are eligible for a new license after that first five years. And that's why we chose the first two years and the next three for those levels, is that after five years, our teachers have, go from an initial educator license to a professional educator license, and that would be the next step, that third-tier professional teacher. If you look at the salary ranges, that mirrors what our current salary range has been, through collective bargaining agreements in the past, through the old salary schedules, so there's been no changes to that. So we have, our teachers currently are in that range of salary, and then the new level that we're looking to move above that is that leader, and the professional teacher leader, or leader teacher. We have not determined what that value of compensation will be, at this point, it will not take effect for this year, but that's something that we've talked about, what we might like to do, what can we afford to do, and it needs to be something that is, you know, somewhat of incentive, but not such a large amount that, you know, we want that middle professional teacher to be a very fair compensation also. So that's something that we've, are still working through, but what we have talked about is, how can we identify who those leaders are? So the general idea is that we have an application process, that teachers need to submit, okay, their evidence of the leadership, and then we'll have review panels that go through and review that, and then identify that the teachers, yes, you qualify. So that's what we're in process of this year, we received our first set of applications actually this week, and we'll be doing that throughout the school year. As an FYI, we have about just over 260 full-time teachers in the school district, and right now, about 150 of those are actually eligible based upon experience and licensing that could be in that leadership level. We certainly don't expect all 160 to move in, you know, at that time. We decided not to put quotas on it, we thought if someone's a leader, they're a leader, and we need to be able to recognize that. But because of the budget, and where we're at, we don't know what that money amount, you know, would be. So one of the key things we also did when we started this process, said that this has to be flexible, regarding, regardless of what our budget situation is, that it can't be something that requires additional funding, that based on what our current revenue levels are, we need to be able to be adaptable to that. And then in the future, whatever those revenue levels are, we can adjust accordingly. And so it really isn't necessarily about a way of bringing more money in, that's something that we have to, you know, balance and look at what those fair wages are, but it's really more about how we distribute, you know, the money that we have, in maybe a more fair and equitable manner. So that's the basic idea behind the plan, like I said, we could probably give a much larger, longer presentation, in fact, we have a number of people that will be presenting later on at a conference this year, you know, about our particular model. And, you know, there are a lot of different models throughout the state that are being adapted, some that are similar to this, but this really is a unique model that we feel is a best fit for the Menonah Grove School District. It was done in a collaborative nature, that teachers were at the table with us as we developed, and to make sure that we had that buy-in, and I think it's really going to be a good plan, but we're in the first phases, and we're really committed to, you know, making this work. And I will leave time at the end for any questions that anyone has on anything that I speak to. Okay, the next key piece for this year, long-range facilities plan, and this is something that, when we talk about the communication, we're starting to try to get, we've been trying to along get communication out, we write, regularly write press releases to send, you know, the local media's been great about, you know, following the work that we've been doing. And so the status as far as where we're at at this point, this is one of the slides that shows, and this one kind of works from the top on down in this pyramid. So the master planning was something that was completed a year ago, and that was basically an assessment of our facilities. We worked with an architectural firm, Epstein Newan Architects, and a construction management firm, C.G. Schmidt, as well with our own staff, to really go through in detail our current facilities, not only for structural identification and evaluation, but even, but more so also the educational use. How are they being used educationally, what is potential use for the spaces in the future, and what might those future needs be? So it was really more of an assessment, we have, this information is all available online on our website, and there's a very large document that was produced, what that, that summary, that master plan, or that, you know, base year evaluation looked like. And now we're moving into the second phase, and looking at the priorities, trying to now look at planning for the future. And one of the key pieces that we looked at, well, let me just, I'll get to the next slide, I guess, before I speak to that. So, but that's the second phase, working down. Third phase, then, what are some of the options? Once we decide what the priorities are, what are our options to meet those, you know, goals and priorities, and then finally, there'll be some project at the end. So with that, this one slide summarizes kind of those key next steps, and where we're at right now. Okay, so the first piece is, you know, looking at implementing the recommendations, that acronym stands for Long-Range Facilities Planning Committee. Those are the recommendations that came forth with regard to the buildings, and we're looking at, number one, we know that at some point, we're going to need additional space. We have an enrollment study, we know that particularly the village and some of the town of Cottage Grove is growing, we're going to be monitoring, you know, that real closely, so we don't know when that need might be, but when the need exists for more space, we need to look at, well, how will we accommodate that? And looking at grade configurations is really important, because the district has had a lot of changes throughout the years in grade configurations. Right now, in Menona, Winnequa School is a pre-K through 5 building, which is somewhat more of a traditional, but in approach, but many districts as well have what we have in Cottage Grove, where we have a Taylor Prairie being a pre-K through 1 grades, Cottage Grove School is grades 2 through 4, and then Glacial Drumlin School houses our 6-8 for the entire district, but also the 5th grade Cottage Grove students, so it's a really 5-8 building. And so when we look at the future with future growth, do we want to continue that pattern of students transition, you know, to new buildings as they move up in grades, or do you want to look at converting to the neighborhood school concept, or something in between? So that's what we're studying right now, and we're really taking a very measured approach, instead of trying to jump to, well, here's what we've done, because we've always done it that way, to really assess, okay, where are we at, and not only educationally, what might best fit the students' needs, but there's a lot of other factors, cost factors with transportation, and the buildings that we have right now, and how they can be utilized. So that's the planning phase that we're in right now, is really doing that analysis of where we're at, and in the future, when there is a need, what are we going to do? The building capacity, you might think is a pretty easy thing, okay, you look at your square footage, and here's how many students you can have, but it really isn't that simple, because you have to look at educational use, and that some rooms, depending on their function, educationally can hold more students than others, and what are our goals for class size and so on. So we spent a lot of time to look at, what is that real capacity? And again, those, that information is something that we're, we have, again, part of that report, and that's something that we need to, you know, really narrow, have a firm number as we move forward about, okay, when do we know that we're out of space, and that we need to do something in the future? The third piece, prioritizing the capital maintenance list, that's something that we've always had a five-year plan on capital maintenance projects, but it's a matter of reprioritizing, and what is really important, essential, we do now versus the future. And I will say, all in all, our buildings are in excellent shape, but there's always continuing maintenance that needs to go on to make sure that they stay in that order. Addressing district-owned properties, again, the properties that aren't being utilized fully right now, assessing what are their future potentials, is there a use for them, and so on, that's part of the report. And then athletics is something that we're also examining, part of the properties. As you know, for the high school, we have limited district-owned athletic fields for, we have, you know, the football, soccer stadium, but otherwise, we have partnerships with the city of Menona, Village of Cottage Grove, to use athletic fields, and it's just a matter of examining, are those going to continue to serve our needs in the future, or is that something we should be looking at long-range as well, to be able to address any future needs there? And so we're looking at all these preliminary options moving forward, and so looking at cost estimates, and so right now, those two pieces, the priorities and options, that's the goal for this year, is that during this year, that we'll have that narrowed down, determine what are the options we want to bring forward, and then a timeline. Obviously, at some point, when there is real building construction going on, that would mean a referendum to do so. So we'll talk about when that happens, what that might possibly look like, and what that timeline, but need to emphasize at this point, there's been no decisions made, and that comes back to the communication piece, okay? This is one form and opportunity to share out information, and really to make sure the community knows that we're working on this, and please stay tuned, and it's our job to make sure that we continue to communicate with you as we move forward. Another key piece will be, as we move forward, is that community engagement, and getting feedback along the way as well, before final decisions are made. Okay, and next, the budget process, I actually don't have a separate slide, because Jared has a quite lengthy presentation he'll give shortly, but that's something as well, that the process and how we develop our budget, how our needs fit in, you know, to the, not only the long-range plan, but, you know, the short-term as well, and to make sure every dollar that we have available is utilized most efficiently, to make sure it's, you know, positively impacting our students. And so that's something, it's a continual process, that we're reevaluating how we determine those budget allocations, and so on. And then I mentioned the last piece, the communication, is just an ongoing thing. You know, we've tried to do additional types of communication, the social media, of course, is something that has, you know, changed, you know, for everyone. We do not have a communication specialist that works for the district, it's done by a lot of individuals, all have a key role in that, you know, things like having a district Facebook page, you know, the website, those are essential, that we keep those up to speed. How do we, how else can we get, you know, information out? So it's something that we're far from satisfied, we know we need to continue to do a better job, and keep working on that, but so that's why it's listed as a priority for this year. Okay, so that's my brief, you know, kind of overall picture of what we're working on. I'd be glad, at this point, to take questions on anything I spoke about, or anything else that anyone has an interest on, that is happening in the schools today. Yes?
Mary Ann, we've 5602 Winnequa Road, we've talked about in the past, you focused on the achievement app, again, is that still going to be a focus going forward?
Great question, and absolutely, yes, it is. So that's something that, in some cases, we feel we've made some real gains, in other places, the data hasn't, you know, or the achievement hasn't, the numbers haven't improved perhaps as much as we'd want, but we also know that we're doing a lot of good things, and it's a matter of adjusting. So anyway, the short answer is yes, that will still continue to be a priority. Thank you, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot my introduction.
Okay, and next, I would like to introduce our Board Treasurer, Susan Manning, who will provide our Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, thank you all very much for coming tonight. It's fun to see some familiar faces who have come to join us. My job is to help present the Treasurer's Report tonight, and the Treasurer's Report is included on pages 10 and 11 of the Menona Grove School District Annual Report, and will be presented in detail by the Director of Business Services. The 2014-15 fiscal year audit has been conducted, and no major findings were presented. The Board of Education will be getting a full audit report at the regular meeting in February of 2016, and will be getting that information to you at that time. Thank you again for coming, and the Director of Business Services will be continuing with the presentation on the report. Thank you.
All right, good evening, and thank you for coming out to our annual meeting, our budget hearing. We don't usually get a large crowd when we start talking about budgets during monthly meetings, so this is a nice opportunity for me to walk through what our district is doing on the financial side, so thank you for coming. As Treasurer Susan Manning had stated, my name is Jared Rosing, I'm the Director of Business Services with the district. I have been here for about five years, and so it's been a great five years, I have a great Board of Education, a great community, and great staff that works in the buildings with our students. So, so tonight's presentation is going to be a very, somewhat of a high-level presentation. In your packet, starting on page 12, it goes into a few more details on the budget, but like most people will tell you, I enjoy talking about the budget, so feel free if there's questions that we need to talk about tonight, I'm more than happy to do that, but also, my office is always open to invite people in to talk about what we're doing great for kids on the financial side of it, so, but feel free to follow along, there is a handout for the presentation, and also in the booklet. So, we're going to start out talking a little bit about our district demographics. We have a number of municipalities that make up our school district, the largest land value that we have is the city of Menona, followed by the Village of Cottage Grove, and the Township of Cottage Grove. Currently, we were estimating for the budget, a growth of about 2.5% in our equalization value. I'll take a step back, the Board actually approved this preliminary budget in June, our third Friday count was September 18th, so by the time that we needed to publish everything, we needed to continue with our preliminary budget, so there's numbers that will be changing, but so for tonight's purpose, this is the budget that was approved by the Board. So on October 1st, the actual evaluations came out, and it's great news for us, we actually saw an increase of 4.5%. So we're starting to see that growth come back, when the economy did the downturn, we slowed down as well. And so what I'll talk a little bit about later is the growth, and how does that impact us as a school district? But right now, we're looking at an increase of about 4.5% for next year. This graph indicates what we were projecting of that 2.5, you can see that it's, there's not a large increase, and we are a negative-aided school district, and so since we've seen some growth in our students, we've been able to actually capture some additional state aid, because our property value per student had decreased, because our growth has been faster than our property valuation. Our district has a number of buildings, and so we currently have three elementary schools, two are located in Cottage Grove, so we have our Cottage Grove Elementary School, Taylor Prairie, and then here in Menona is Winnequa, our one middle school, Glacial Drumlin, which does house our Cottage Grove 5th graders. Our 5th graders in Menona stay at Winnequa, we have our high school. The district office that you're currently in, we're very proud of, we did a lot of work here to upgrade it, to be able to suit the needs of the district, to bring in our staff, to provide additional professional training, and to house some additional educational opportunities, such as MG-21, which is our charter school, and Dane County School to work leases out some office space for us in the old Nichols Elementary area. Some other buildings that we're currently not using is Maywood Elementary, we leased that to the Madison School District, however, they have in there is the Nuesca Mundo, it's a bilingual program, and we do have the opportunity to place some of our students, so now that we're using it fully, we do have some students that are actually getting some great experience that way. And then we have some vacant residential houses up by the high, the high school. So when we talk about membership, this is our September membership, and what's important about this is, membership is really our driving force when we talk about revenue limits, and the maximum amount of money that the district can collect between state aid and property taxes. Residents, our residents that have to reside in our school district, they do not include open-enrolled students in, but they do include open-enrolled students out. So we were projecting 79 student growth for this year, our third Friday count already happened, and we do know that we only made it to 24. You'll see, we're sort of a unique school district, when you look at us compared to some surrounding Dane County schools, we do have some peaks and valleys in our growth, and that does- And that does go to show that Manona is sort of landlocked, there's not additional building going on. Our building that's happening is out in the village and the township of Cottage Grove. And so, you know, when there's a good economy that was really booming out there, we also saw that, you know, we have some families that move in, and then they move out. So, but we are starting to see the uphill side of membership, which is great. So, we were projecting thirty, three thousand thirty-four students. However, when we really start looking at capacity of our buildings and additional all-around, we need to look at all the students that are in our schools. And this enrollment includes all students that are actually in our buildings. And we're looking at three thousand three hundred and sixty-three students this year. And that includes three hundred and forty-nine students that are classified as either open enrolled students coming in, or tuition waiver students, or nine-week waiver students. That brings the district about 2.2 million dollars. However, as we work through this with the Board of Education, we also have to make sure that we're planning ahead. Our residents are our number-one priority. And so, at those years that we saw a decrease in our residents, we were able to utilize some open enrollment funding, to be able to continue the program that we were currently doing. So, when we talk about public school funding, I think it's very important to people to understand how it works. So, as I had mentioned before, majority of our money comes from two sources, state aid and local property taxes. There's sort of counterbalancing fact, so when state aid increases, our property taxes decrease, and when state aid decreases, our property taxes increase. And that all comes off of our revenue limit worksheet, which talks about with resident students. So, the revenue limits were established back in nineteen ninety-three, to help assist with property taxes. They were established to maximum amount of revenue a district can collect. So, how it works is, each district has a base amount of money per student. We multiply that by our student membership in September, and that gives us a total dollar amount that we can collect through state aids or property taxes. So, once we're notified by the state of how much state aid we get, then the difference is what comes out of property taxes. And so, we are in the first year of the state budget, which means that all school districts know what the revenue limits are. We were able to do our calculations. And based on what we have right now, is there is no increase per pupil for revenue limit. So, on the revenue limit side of things, the only way that we can increase revenue is either through increased enrollments, or going to an operational type of referendum. So, this is state aid. When we talk about state aid, there's a number of different types of state aid. This one's specifically talking about the equalization aid. So, the amount of state aid the district receives is dependent on the state aid formula. There are three tiers in determining how much money we get. There's primary, secondary, and tertiary. So, districts with a high equalized value per pupil, like I had mentioned before, are actually negativated, so they take a little bit of aid away. And the concept of that was, is to equalize the state money that's being spread out through the state of Wisconsin. We are, this year, anticipating, and we've seen an increase in our state aid over the last couple of years. Part of that is because of our enrollment growth. But the other part of it is, is our property values have not grown as fast as our student growth has. And so, when the state looks at us and puts us into the equation, it's looking like our property value is decreasing per student, because we're seeing the growth in students. So, we're able to get a little bit additional aid, which definitely helps on the property tax side of things, which is a great thing to have. So, with all that talk, we're finally now going to start getting to our budgets. And when we start talking about school finance and school budgets, they do become a little complicated. These are all the different types of funds that we have. Primary, the ones that we're going to talk about tonight is Fund Ten, which is our general fund, which is where majority of all of our business happens. This is where all general education occurs, where all of our administrative costs are. Our special project funds, Fund Twenty-One is where our grants and gifts would go into. Fund Twenty-Seven is our special education fund. So, working with students with IEPs, we do separate that cost out, because there's additional aid that comes from the state. Currently, we're projecting that to be about twenty-six cents on the dollar for each amount that we spend on special education. We have our debt service, there's actually two types of debt service. Fund Thirty-Eight is a non-referendum, which means that that money has not been approved by a referendum. So, that money comes out prior to us putting any money into General Fund Ten. Fund Thirty-Nine is referendum-approved debts, and that would be referendum, that would be to pay for a building or capital projects. A number of years ago, there was, when we built GDS, we had the operational override of the revenue limits. That just goes into our General Fund Ten accounts. So, that would be separate than the Fund Thirty-Nine. Our capital projects are Fund Forty, so when we're building, or we're doing major remodeling. Fund Fifty is our food service funds. Community Service Fund is Fund Eighty. And then, our Cooperative Program Fund is if we are a fiscal agent for a program, like we are for Dane County School to Work, and we work with other schools, we run that through Fund Ninety-Nine, because we want to keep that separate than coming out of Fund Ten or Twenty-Seven, because it's not a direct impact on our students, it's not being funded by our property taxes or state aid. So, this is the publication that's actually in your handouts. This is our general fund, Fund Ten. And what you're seeing is, we are proposing, at this point in time, a deficit budget of about 852,000 dollars. We are planning on taking that money out of our fund balance. Our current fund balance is at 24%, and this would bring it down to 21%. Our Board policy has a range of fifteen to 25%. So, we're actually bringing our fund balance down to the middle range of it. Part of the reason that we decided to do this was, we looked through zero-based budgeting process, and had identified the essential things that we needed. We have a nine to 10% increase in health insurance, and about a 3% increase in transportation, about a four to 5% increase in utilities. So, we felt that, without adding any new programs, that we were doing our due diligence, utilizing our fund balance to be able to maintain programming for our students. So, how does our general fund revenues work? You'll see that our local tax levy, which is our property taxes, our other local revenue, which is emissions, rentals, leases, like when we leased the Maywood Building to Madison School District. The Wisconsin inter-district payments, we're looking at open enrollment there. This is at a 1.9 million dollars, because we do have some of that open enrollment coming in on the special education side. State categorical aid is where we're talking about, library aid, transportation aid. You'll see the state equalization aid is at the 11,741,000 dollars. That's what we had just talked about. Federal revenue would be grants that we receive from the federal government, such as Title One, for a total revenue of 35,291,000 dollars. So, how do we spend that money that we get in Fund Ten? You'll see that salaries and benefits take up a majority portion of that. Purchase services would be contracts, this is where our transportation costs would come out of, any types of contracts that we would enter into with professional developers. Non-capital is our supplies, capital objects, or anything that's, like such as equipments. Debt service would be our leases that we would have on our computers, and copy machines. Insurance is our workers' comp property liability insurance. And transfers is the amount of money that we're transferring to other funds that are coming out of Fund Ten. And then, others would be things that don't, per DPI's requirement, do not fit in any of those other objects. And so, what we see there are, like refunds that are for prior-year expenditures, that we don't want to put part of a salary or benefit or a purchase service. So, we're looking at an expenditures of 36,144,000 dollars. And so, that's what we're getting on our deficit spending. So, as I had just briefly talked about, salary and benefits don't include just the salary portions of an hourly or a teacher's contract or administrator's contract. It also includes social security, Wisconsin retirements, our health and dental, and post-employment benefits, that the district has worked very hard, and collaboratively with our staff, on reducing some of that liability moving forward. Purchase services would be our transportation, utilities, and contracts. Non-capital objects is supplies, capital objects, equipment, capital lease payments under debts, insurance, workers' comp property, transfers would be to food service and special education. And then, other objects are district fees, prior expenditures. So, that is our Fund Ten, where I state majority of our spending, and everything happens. We'll move to Fund Twenty-One and Twenty-Seven. This is the same information that's in your booklet. We are following DPI's recommended approval process, which means that this is the minimum amount that we need to report for these two. But majority of the expenditures here are for special education. This cannot have a fund balance, so we're anticipating bringing in revenues of 5.9 million dollars, and spending that out as well. So, special education and Fund Ten are our two major funds that we work with. So, you'll see where our money's coming from with this graph. You're seeing that local revenues in this district make up 52% of our revenues. So, it's very important that, as we work through our budget process, we understand where our money's coming from, and it's coming from our local property taxes, or fees that our families are paying. Thirty-nine percent are coming from state revenue, while federal revenue is at 3%, and then, open enrollment is supplying at 5%. Expenditures, 72% of our expenditures are made up in salaries and benefits. Obviously, we, as Dean Bowles will tell us, we buy time, our teachers are in front of our students. We need to make sure that we are investing in the future of our students. And so, that's why you're seeing 72% of our expenditures go into salaries and benefits. Then, behind that comes our purchase services. Supplies, equipment, and risk management make up 6%, and then, transfers are at 9%. Debt service, this is something that we are not able to sort of zero-based budget on. We have approved debt schedules when we go out for bonds or borrowing. So, this year, we're anticipating making debt service payments of 5,590,000 dollars. Here's a chart showing you our payments over the next number of years. As of right now, in Fund Thirty-Eight, our last payment would be made in 2034. And these are things that will come up when we work through the energy efficiency projects that this district had did, we've done three phases. WRS, when we had joined WRS, we had to get that prefunded, and so, we're coming to the end of those payments. But as you'll see, they are flat on both sides, and then a valley, because then, when you look at our Fund Thirty-Nine, we're going to start seeing that go down. And so, we're trying to, as we build that debt schedule, making sure that we're not seeing large peaks. But what's really exciting about Fund Thirty-Nine is, since 2011, we've refinanced five times, and in today's dollars, we've saved the property taxpayers 2.9 million dollars. That is direct property tax relief, because all this does not go into general funds. It is debt service that's passed along to our property tax. So, we're pretty excited about that. We've obviously didn't create that ourselves, and we've taken advantage of the low interest that was out there. Capital project funds, you'll see that we're not anticipating any new revenues. We don't anticipate doing any type of borrowing for any major property or major capital projects this year. We do have 90,000 dollars of expenditures that we will be finishing out on our last phase of the energy projects. Food service funds, right now, we are anticipating collecting revenues of 1.2 million dollars, and spending that out. However, over the last number of years, we've been pretty successful in the participation rate of our school nutrition program, where we have been collecting additional revenue, and our expenditures have stayed low. Now, obviously, we would love to be able to keep and lower our school nutrition prices. However, USDA requires us to have them at certain points. So, it's not like we're interested in making money in this department, but what's nice about it is, we're not transferring money out of Fund Ten, taking it out of the classrooms, to make sure this is a zero-based account. But the other part of it is, is we can upgrade, and we can also be looking at alternative ways to, alternative meals for our students, more fresh fruits, more, things that do start costing a little bit more than all the processed stuff that's out there. Our community service funds, this is our Fund Eighty. This is something that you'll see a wide variety across the states, of who, what goes into community service fund or Fund Eighty. I have a breakdown of what we put in there currently. The key of it is, is that it needs to be open to our community, and that's the goal of our community service funds. It's not, we're not interested in pushing expenditures out of Fund Ten into it, unless it's something that qualifies for Fund Eighty. But it does give us the opportunity to create some additional opportunities for our community by using this fund. And then, this, our cooperative funds, this is our Dane County School to Work program. And you'll see that they're anticipating bringing in through grants and fees from schools, 345,000. Since it's a grant-based program, they turn around and utilize that money on a yearly basis. Since we have a Fund Seventy-Three, revocable benefit trust, we are required to make sure that we point that out at our annual meeting and publicize it. This was set up back in July 2008, for post-employment health and dental benefits. Part of the purpose of setting it was, is that as districts entered into agreements with staff members on how long they had health and dental insurance, we needed to be able to set up for future payments. Our district has made some major changes. We are actually moving to a not providing health and dental insurance to our new staff when they retire. It is a 403B contribution, so we have a set dollar amount on an annual basis, and moving that way, instead of working with health insurance and dental insurance that continues to see large inflation rates on an annual basis. So, we are making those moves to utilize the best opportunities out there for our staff and the districts. But right now, we do have a balance of 1,304,000 dollars in our trust. That money will be utilized to pay for future health and dental benefits that have been promised to our grandfather-two staff that have already retired from the districts. You can see how that happens. We made, we do a pay-as-you-go process, so we are required by DPI, since we have a trust account, that we put 5% in each year, above and beyond what we expend. So, the deposit's going in, the withdrawal's coming out, our interest, and that gives us our 1.3 million dollars balance as of the end of June. So, a summary of everything that we talked about tonight, is we are actually looking at a proposed property tax levy increase of 1.14%, which, when you look at our expenditures of all funds, the way that this is reported out is sort of misleading, because we have to give you two years of actuals or audited data, and then, we give you our budget. If you look at the top spreadsheets, you'll see that it's looking like we have a 7.47% decrease. We are required to report out our refinancing. As of right now, we don't have a plan on doing any refinancing this year, because we don't have any debt schedules that are available. So, that shows you that we're not, we're cutting 14 million dollars out of our budget. However, that's not correct, because we are not planning for that. So, based on this, it's a negative 7.47%, but what we want to look at is our proposed property tax levy, and that's an increase of a 1.14%, which I think is pretty, a small, significant number, due to the fact that we're looking at a 10% increase in health insurance. We only grew by 24 students, and we have utility increases of 5%, and other, just natural things that continue to increase for us. So, that results in a mill rate decrease, so, which is what passes along to our property taxes. We're looking at a 13 dollars and 30 cents per thousand dollars for excess value for our mill rates, which is great news, because that should result in a decrease in property taxes on school taxes. Now, this is coming out prior to any type of adjustments in our equalization aid that we will find out in October fifteenth. we will find out in October 15th. A graph for you to reference, I'm not going to read through it, but this just gives some different scenarios on assessed home value and the different impacts it potentially could lead. Now, this is just using gross dollars because it's before any property tax credit such as the first dollar or school levy credits. So there are some things that are going to change before our board finalizes our budget at the end of October. We are looking at our final membership counts. We got our certification for district equalized property value, and on October 15th, we will get our aid payments and notice from DPI. So we're planning, as of right now, October 28th, for the board to make final action on this budget for next year. So this concludes the portion of the budget hearing. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any or any comments.
Jared, can you explain on the debt service, what is your district's plan? Because obviously, the refinancing, as you've done, you've set up a payment schedule in 2019, 2020 through 2027 and 2028. If you can't continue to refinance, that's a sizable jump to the district potentially in debt service payments on top of any potential referendum that you might be looking at down the road. What is the district's plan? Because it's easy to say you save money in the short term, but those refinancing doesn't change the fact we have to pay it at some time. And that time may come when, for example, you might want to do a building out in Cottage Row. What is the district's plan to deal with the large, very large increases in debt service payments?
Well, you know, right now, what we're looking at is, obviously, like you said, if the refinancing's not there. Typically, what we find is that when districts enter into these types of debts, they always are looking at potential refinancing or changing some things out. We do have the ability, unless there's things that change, that we can work with our bond counsel and, you know, restructure some of that. But the other part of it is, is looking at as equalization continues to increase or equalization values continue to increase, some of those peaks won't seem as large. But right now, we're monitoring some of those things. I can't say that we have an exact plan of what's going to happen, but we have to look at our property taxes and what's the ultimate end result for our property taxpayers if those continue to happen and we can't refinance them.
But the threat would be is that if that doesn't work, that would be, you have to levy that, correct? That's an amount?
Yes, we have to levy that.
And so that would potentially be significant property tax increases if you can't refinance.
Right. Yep.
Excuse me, could you clarify why they had jumps in that year?
In the year? And Fund 38 is part of the way that when we had set up our debt schedule to minimize some of the large impact jumps, they looked at our Fund 39 debt schedule and was able to stretch out the bond payments. So the first principal payments of some of those borrowing occurred then when other payments had dropped off in Fund 39. So trying to minimize, looking at the entire Fund 38 and Fund 39 debt schedule. Other questions?
One other question. On the $800,000 deficit that you're rolling this year, can you give us any indication how much of that is ongoing expenses or if there's any one-time things that occurred in the budget that forced that or what was? And then obviously, you can't continue to roll the deficit, continue to take it out of the fund balance. So is that $800,000, is that all ongoing expenditure?
As of right now, it's all ongoing. There are capital projects, you know, there are certain budgets that can be reduced. However, we don't plan on reducing those unless we are unable to go to a referendum, and then we'd be forced back to make some additional cuts. If you remember, over the number of years, we've cut significantly here. About three years ago, we cut $1.2 million. Before that was about $852,000. So those would be things that we would have to go back to and cut, but right now, they're not one-time purchases that are making that $852 be there. And that's something that we had a in-depth conversation with the board. You know, these are not things that it's going to go away next year. However, we do, the $852,000 doesn't necessarily roll on because of the way that the state budget has been set up is that the first year of the state budget, there wasn't additional monies to the schools. However, the second year of the state budget, there are some additional funds that have been sort of put at the second part of the budget. So we will be able to see some additional revenue that way. Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Oh, one question. What is the terminal lease with the Maywood School?
We are in, we have a five-year, or a six-year lease with them, so we are in the third year of that.
Okay. Any options on that or just?
No. There is, we just would renegotiate with them if they're interested and we're interested.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're leaving that option open based on some of the long-range facility conversations.
Sure. Thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Dan for his presentation and Susan, but especially Jared. You know, year after year, we challenge Jared with budget cuts and OPEB changes and compensation changes and refinancing our benefits and so on, and he's always there with the answers and the ideas, and we always get clean, excellent audits every year after year. So I really do want to thank Jared for the job that he does here. That brings us to item H, which is the adoption of the tax levy. The levy's printed again on the suggested motions pages, page five, and if you would like to make a motion to approve the levy, please state your name and address and read the motion as suggested motion as printed. All right, up on the screen. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the levy? I know, it's a long paragraph. And we're not leaving here until we do. Thank you, Dan.
I am Shreer, 4909 Rossin Place, Manona. Move approval of a tax levy, approval of a tax levy in the total amount of $24,967,474, which consists of a general fund levy in the amount of $18,907,430, Fund 10. A debt service fund tax levy in the amount of $5,198,721, Fund 39. And non-referendum debt obligations of $538,773, Fund 38. And a community services fund tax levy in the amount of $315,250, Fund 80.
All right, the levy motion has been moved. Is there a second? Please state your name and address. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. If I could ask, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion carries. Item I, authorization of salaries for school board members. Again, it's up on the, it's displayed before you. Could we have a motion for authorization of salaries for school board members? Please.
I am Michael Bezerit, 6305 Southern Circle. Move to set the 2015, 2016 annual salaries of the school board members at $3,050 a year.
Thank you. The, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Please state your name and address.
Lawrence Reed, 5602 Winifred Road.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Right, I would like, yes, the board members, as we traditionally do, abstain from that Item J, reimbursement of school board member-related expenditures. Again, the motion is before you. Is there a motion?
I am Mary Ann Rude, 5602 Winifred Road, Manona. We have to authorize the reimbursement of school board members for expenses incurred in performance activities.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second. Mike Michelson, 764A, St. James Street, Cottage Row.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. My comment is that the, these expenditures are primarily associated with travel to the annual school board convention held in Milwaukee each year. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Again, the board members will abstain from this motion. Item K, authorize the school board to establish date, time, and place of the 2016 annual No, that's not, actually, that came up. The law has changed about the sale of property. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we no longer have to do that at the annual meeting. Yeah, it's not on the?
It's on the slideshow.
It's on the slideshow. Is that it? Ah. I'm looking for this. I know what he's talking about. I'm looking on here. It's not on here. That was a recent change in this state law. Sorry, where are we? Item K, authorize the school board to establish date, time, and place of the 2016 annual meeting. Is there a motion?
I am Mary Ann Rude, 5602 Winifred Road. We have to authorize the school board to establish the date, time, and place of the 2016 budget hearing.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Mary Ann Rude, 439, helping circle, Manona. I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Statutorily, the annual meeting is to be held in July, I believe, unless there's, unless you authorize the school board to change the meeting time. And the problem with having it, holding it in the summer is that we generally don't have enough budget and information and so on to make an accurate, to accurately put together a budget. And so that's why we move it to October and as we're having it now every year. It's been, any discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. And that brings us to item L, other business, where we'd like to take an opportunity to give anyone an opportunity to raise relevant issues for discussion tonight. Is there anyone who would like to bring some business before the annual meeting tonight? Well, that's easy. Thank you very much. Last thing on the agenda is a motion for adjournment.
Hi, I am Mike Bezerit, 6305 Southern Circle. Move at the meeting to be adjourned.
It's been moved. Is there a second? This one, we really can't go home until we have a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.